I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of May 19th, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by a roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have council, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Euring?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Paul. I'd be happy to. All rise, place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I so move.
Okay, here a second.
Yeah, a second.
We have a first and a second to approve the agenda. All, may I have a roll call both?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion care.
Okay. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting is properly posted on May 17th, 2021.
The agenda item before us today is property tax funding for schools, and I would like Karen Fair and recognition of the time she has spent on this issue to introduce. The staff members will be running this and begin the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Paul. First of all, I'd like to just thank every member of the public who's watching. I know there's been intense interest in this for years and in some cases decades. So thank you for being here. Just a reminder, the two council members who serve on the School District Separation Ad hoc Committee are Councilmember Mikey Pearson and myself. And our team presenting this evening are Christine Wood, Deputy City Attorney, Latonya Kirk Carter from Kirk Carter Associates, Kathy Domenico, I'm not quite sure of the name of your company. Who am I missing? Is Terry here? Yes, excuse me, Terry Ryland, Ryland School Business Services. And I think that's it. Am I missing anybody? Okay, that's it. All right. Thank you, presenters, and thank you, members of the public, for your interest. And we welcome all of your questions. Please take notes if you like during the presentation so that we can get through the entire presentation and take questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fair. And at this time, Kathy, could you go ahead and start sharing your slides? As Councilmember Fair mentioned, today is a study session on property taxes and school funding, school finance. We're very excited to present this information mostly because in over the course of the last couple of years, we've received several questions about how schools are financed and what the erection of the Malibu Unified School District will mean for the residents of Malibu, in particular, as it relates to their property tax and current property tax expenses. So we thought this would be a really great time. In addition to that, there is also the ongoing differences in the proposals between the city and the district. And the crux of the differences of these proposals really rests in how the city views and understands property taxes versus how the district has chosen to explain property taxes to their constituents. And so we thought it would be really important time to make sure, one, that the city council and the residents of Malibu all have a very clear understanding of property tax and school finance. Because there will come a time when we all have to make a decision about, well, the council has to make a decision, but also the voters of Malibu will have to make a decision about how the Malibu Unified School District is funded and exists. And so we wanted to make sure you are all informed as this process goes forward. So at this time, next slide, I'm going to introduce, as Karen did, the members of the team. Karen did a great, Councilmember Fair did a great job of introducing the members of the team. What I will point out to you today is that our school finance and property tax experts, Latonya Kirk Carter and Kathy Domenico, will be the ones presenting tonight as they have a wealth of knowledge and experience. Latonya, as you know, was, has been a school administrator for over 30 years, most recently retired as the CBO of Beverly Hills Unified, which will be, is the only basic aid or was the only basic aid school district in LA County, giving her a wealth of knowledge about the types of financing that we'll face as a basic aid district once Malibu Unified is established. And Kathy Domenico is our property tax expert on the team. As the principal of Capital Public Finance Group, Kathy has an incredible amount of experience advising school districts throughout the state on public finance, property taxes, and bond funding. So I think it'll be, she'll, this will be in a wonderful presentation. We encourage the council to ask questions. And at the very end, the public will also have an opportunity to ask questions. So please use this as a study session and as an opportunity for all of us really to get smarter about this because this is a really important part of school separation. So with that, I will turn this over to Kathy.
Thanks for having me here tonight. And I know that property taxes probably make most of you want to curl up and maybe fall asleep. It's actually something that's very exciting to me, and yes, it really is. So we are going to go through something that I'm kind of passionate and excited about, and hopefully I can bring some of that excitement to you and not make you want to just take a little nap in the middle here. So we're going to start with an overview of property taxes in California and talking about not just property taxes from the school district perspective, but also from that of other local agencies, like the city itself, county, special districts. So although the topic and really the purpose of this is to provide you with a better understanding of how that school separation would work, I really encourage you to ask questions even related to something that you've come across for the city. If you'd like to just bring up a topic, I'm happy to talk through it with you. I will pause throughout this presentation for questions, but if you have a question, I don't have a problem with you kind of jumping in, interjecting. I can either redirect you if we're going to address the topic later on in the presentation, or we can have that discussion as we're dealing with the slides. I will do my best to kind of monitor the hands, but it's a little difficult when I'm trying to present. So feel free to jump in if there's something you'd like to talk about as I'm going through the slides. So after I go through that general property tax overview in California, Latonya is going to come in and talk more detail about school district funding and how property taxes fit into the school funding model because it is different than it is for other local agencies. And after that, we're going to focus in a little bit more on property taxes related to the school district reorganization and specifically what the various proposals have been. So with that, I'm going to jump right in. And I guess I'm going to pause just for one second for the council. Are there anything, are there any just burning questions that you want to ask upfront that I want to make, I need to make sure to address as we're going through this presentation? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I want to make sure if you have something that you want to ask now, feel free and I can make sure we fit it into the presentation. Yes, Mayor Grisanti?
I think, I think it would be useful if, I think it would be useful if you could start by telling people that this does not, is not going to affect the 7% of the property tax dollars that the city of Malibu currently gets.
Yes, and I will not only tell you that, I'm going to show you. So there's actually a chart in this presentation that even shows where the city of Malibu's line item is and where the school district is. And as we even go through the reorganization, we're going to show in reorganization where the school district's piece will hit. So yes, that, your question will specifically be addressed. Thank you. And that is an important point, a very important point. So let's jump right into property taxes in California. And as most of you probably know, but I of course want to give a little more detail for those watching in the audience, property taxes are levied on real property. So what is that? Buildings and land. It's also levied on some types of personal property. Think large value equipment, machinery, sometimes even these big copy machines that some of the businesses have. It's levied on aircraft, vessels. I worked up in Sausalito, and there's a huge portion of their property tax base that comes from houseboats. So those are just things that property taxes are levied on. There are, of course, tax exempt properties and properties owned by local agencies, like the city or the school district. Those are tax exempt. There is an exception there if it's a property owned by a public agency, but it is operating for a private purpose. There are things called possessory interest taxes where those property owners or those operating that building would still pay into the property tax system. So for the most part, the state really doesn't let anybody get away with anything. If it's a publicly owned property but used for a non-public purpose, that would be subject to property taxes in another manner. Prop 13, which we're going to spend a lot of time on tonight, is the governing legislation that affected how property is taxed in California today and since 1978 when it went into effect, well, essentially 1979. So Prop 13 limits the real, the general property tax on real property to 1% of assessed value. So what is assessed value? I get this question all the time. What is the difference between assessed value and market value? People say, "My home is worth..." And I tell them, "Stop right there. It doesn't matter what your home is worth. It matters what it's assessed at for the purpose of property taxes." And assessed value is set based on the purchase price of the property. And then it increases in one of two ways. Either a year passes and it increases for the lesser of 2% or the change in the California Consumer Price Index, which has been below 2%, especially recently in the recession, it was below 2% several years. Or it'll increase by the value of an improvement to the property. Let's say you add an addition, add another bedroom or add a swimming pool. It'll increase for the value of that improvement and then inflate each year, subsequent year for the lesser of 2% or the change in the California Consumer Price Index. And so assessed value is really the key for how your property is taxed. And in just a moment, I'll show you some of the differences between assessed value and market value. That personal property we talked about is taxed based on its market value, and that's really a big job of the assessor's office is to assign a value to those properties. If approved by voters or landowners, there's additional property taxes that may be imposed or other levies that may be imposed above that 1% general property tax. But it requires voter approval. And under Prop 13, it actually, if it's additional taxes, it requires 2/3 approval until 2001 came along. And you may have heard of Prop 39. That was actually changed to the California Constitution that allowed for school districts and community college districts only to request voter approval for general obligation bonds with a super majority of 55%. No other agency is able to adopt a tax with less than 2/3 vote besides school districts. And in that sense, it's only for general obligation bonds. In addition, agencies may impose direct levies, either things like service charges for sewer or water. Those are typically based on the cost of service. Could be for assessment districts. You may have seen that landscaping and lighting districts or other type of assessment districts, or things like parcel taxes. And locally, you've got one of those. The school district has a parcel tax. That does, that requires 2/3 vote. Assessment districts are actually landowner vote. Service charges are based on the cost of service. So those direct levies aren't necessarily in one nice package. They can be a variety of different things. But both the combination of that 1% general property tax and those other levies, either the voter approved debt or direct levies or what appear on your tax bill and ultimately what you pay in taxes. And in just a couple minutes, I'm actually going to show you a tax bill and we'll go through that in more detail. So I like to show this map because it really depicts the difference between assessed value and market value. So this map basically shows property taxes paid per $100 of market value, of market value for homes in Los, in a Los Angeles zip code. Property taxes again are based on assessed value, and that typically grows at a slower pace than market value. So you'll see a significant difference in what individual property owners pay in property taxes, even though they live in the same neighborhood. And I'm actually going to pull out a little block here. Can everybody see my laser pointer? Can I just get a couple thumbs up or no, as we can see that? Okay. So we have a block here. This is likely a tract home development. So you have a block of homes here that are relatively built around the same time. You may even have a couple homes on this block that are identical to each other. You can see there's a little dark area here and a really light area here. This dark area pays more than $800 per $100,000 of market value. Same block, just down the street. They pay less than $200 per $100,000 of market value. They get the same public services. They go to the same schools. They live in the same city. They receive the same fire benefits. They receive all of the same services. This home pays at least four times what this home pays. That is just to demonstrate the discrepancy in basically what Prop 13 created because these people down here owned their home longer than these people here. They pay a significantly different amount in property taxes. This is a really important point, so I want to stop here and see if anybody has any questions about this concept or anything we talked about on the previous page. Okay. But this is a question I get regularly in meetings, and people just don't understand assessed value and frankly, don't understand the impact of imposing property taxes on an assessed value basis and what that means for a community. But when you think about growth in the tax base, it's something else to think about. So if this property down here changes hands, it'll be reassessed at the market value today, which is significantly higher. So there will be an automatic increase in the property tax revenue coming out of that property. So the change in ownership is a significant driver in the change in property tax revenue generated in a tax base. I'm going to go off the laser pointer and go to another sample. So I mentioned we were going to talk about a, oops, excuse me, a property tax bill. I want to focus in a little bit on this property tax bill. I don't expect anybody to read this right now. I'm going to zoom in on it in a moment. But LA County actually has a sample property tax bill on their website, and they annotate it. So if anybody really is curious and wants to dig in more about their own tax bill, if you go to the LA County website and actually just do a search for sample property tax bill, this will pop up with a nice annotation of what everything means. But for today, we're just going to, we're going to go through a couple key items on here, but I want to focus on kind of what each property owner pays. And you see the annotations here with numbers next to various sections. Those all correspond to a description on the county's website. So that's just to give you an idea. Something that's important to pull out on a property tax bill is what they call an assessor's ID number. You may have heard it as an assessor's parcel number or an APN. That is really a key indicator of your parcel. So that's something you may need to look up sometime. That's where you find it. Owner of record. If the name here is different than your name and you are the owner of record, it means there might be an error at the county level. It's important to look at the owner of record. And down here, there's a dotted line and two payment stubs. That's just what they are. They're payment stubs. So if you don't get, pay your property taxes through an impound account with your lender, you actually are responsible for paying your property tax bill on your own. Property taxes are due November 1st and February 1st. Everybody looks at me and says, "No, they're not. They're due December 10th and April 10th." Well, they're technically late, December 10th and April 10th, and you'd be charged a fee, basically a fine, if you don't pay it by that point. So for the most part, they're due December 10th or April 10th. But you'll see here on the bill, technically, they're due November 1 and February 1. The county will divide up the total amount owed in half. Half of it's due, again, December 10th, and the other half's due in April. And you just submit that directly to the county. So now I want to focus on the meat of the bill itself. Let's start right here where it talks about the assessed value of the property. So on your property tax bill, it'll actually itemize what your assessed value is based on. This sample tax bill is based on land that had an assessed value of about $153,000 and improvements at about $117,000. The sum of that is the total assessed value for the sample property, so $270,000. But this, I can tell that the person that lives in this house is an owner occupant because they qualified for what's considered a homeowner's exemption. And a homeowner's exemption is a flat $7,000 a year, regardless of where you live in the state of California. It is $7,000, and it is simply a deduction from your total assessed value to the taxable value of the property. If this was not an owner occupant situation, there would not be this exemption, and the property would be taxed on the $270,000. So this number here, this taxable value, is what is applied to the various tax rates, both the general 1% taxes and any voter approved bonded indebtedness. It's that number that the tax rates are applied to, and we can see that up here. So I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit, but this is kind of how your county, this is how your county's bill is laid out, where they've got the calculation down below, and then they, up above, they show the calculation of how much this particular property owner will pay. So you can see right here, the first line item is the general tax levy for all agencies, and you see the 1% tax rate. So it's simply 1% multiplied by the taxable, taxable value of the property, means this property owner pays $2,636 in general property taxes. The bill does not show where this money goes, and we'll talk about that and how that's distributed. But this is the general money that is used for the operations of the local agencies serving this particular property. And it will include school districts, community college districts, in a situation, a city, county. So that's the money that's used for operations. Below that, you see the additional levies, the voted indebtedness and the direct assessments. So you see this parcel is paying on three different voter approved bonds. And you see the tax rate here, basically for the school district, they're paying what we say in practice as $70 per $100,000 of assessed value. I think you may have heard that with school bonds. But when you look at it here, the tax rate's actually expressed in cents per $100, which is why it looks like this. And then you see the direct assessments. The reason all these phone numbers are here is because direct assessments are actually not managed by the county auditor controller or the county treasure tax collector. They're actually managed by the individual agencies. So if you have a question about one of these charges, they want you to directly call one of those agencies to sort it out. This is where you see, this is a good example because you see the SMM USD, measure R, $385. That's actually their parcel tax. That is the school district parcel tax. And you see some other direct assessments. It is the sum of the general tax, the voted indebtedness and the direct assessments that goes into that total taxes due amount that is then paid into installments. So that's kind of our property tax bill that everybody gets. And I know a lot of people that have an impound account aren't familiar, but you are still mailed a copy of your property tax bill, and it's something that might just be interesting to look at and see what you're actually being charged. So let's dig in a little bit more on Prop 13. So Prop 13...
I think you have a question, Kathy, for your question?
Yeah, just a quick question. What's the difference between a parcel tax and a property tax? What is a parcel tax?
Oh, that's a great question. So parcel taxes are called a special tax. It's a special tax under the law. And there's actually a specific code section that allows for public agencies to impose a uniform tax per parcel. And it requires 2/3 voter approval, and it's typically used for programs and operations. So when a school district imposes a property tax, it's usually tied to a particular program. I have some clients that say, "Okay, we want to retain music programs, arts, and all these extracurricular programs." They will impose a parcel tax to pay for that because their general 1% tax is not enough. I also see it a lot with parks. So you'll see a parcel tax for parks, and I see a few of those for fire, although fire has their own law which allows for a fire special tax that's a little bit different. But a parcel tax is simply a special tax under the law that requires 2/3 voter approval.
So it's not tied to value? It's just per whatever the designated parcel is?
Uniform tax, the law says, uniform tax per parcel. And it's got several interpretations, but it says, "Uniform tax per parcel." Any other questions? So let's dig into, you know, Prop 13. As you probably are familiar, Prop 13 limited local property taxes. Prior to Prop 13, local agencies really set their own tax rates. Prop 13 directed the state to allocate the property tax so that local government essentially lost control of their tax rates. That's really the crux of what happened. Technically, there's a little more to it, but that's the gist of it. Before Prop 13, statewide, the average property tax rate was 2.67%. Again, it's the average. Some communities were higher, some communities were lower. Prop 13 made three primary changes to property taxes. Number one, it changed the method for determining a property's value. We discussed assessed value. It's called assessed value, and it's that assessed value that applies to tax levies. It limited a property's overall tax rate from all local governments serving the property to no more than 1% without voter approval. It directed the state to determine how to allocate property tax revenue from that 1% rate. So Prop 13 is not what actually went through the details, though, of how that was allocated. A trailer bill to Prop 13 called SB 154 set forth the original way that property taxes were allocated to the various agencies in a post Prop 13 world. So SB 154 was an immediate trailer bill that came out in 1978, and it indicated that a local government's share of the property tax was based on a share, not the amount, the share of the property tax going to that local government before Prop 13. Again, so an agency could have been charging a higher amount, but they had to kind of squish everything down into that 1%. To get to that share, they averaged that agency's property tax revenue for three fiscal years, from 1975 to 1978, for all local agencies except for schools. The schools' percentage was just based on a one-year average. And the main reason for that, if you think about it, and we'll talk about this in a little bit more detail later on, so I'm not going to go into all the details here. But in 1972, the revenue limit went into effect, and essentially, school districts were backfilled from the state. So they were not as property tax dependent as other local agencies since their budget was funded from a combination of property taxes and state aid, just as it is today. So that's why schools were really singled out at that point in time. Statewide, these shares, these relative shares have been frozen since that time. So they have been frozen since the late 70s. That is important, and I give an example because I think it applies, and in Malibu, you'll really understand this. I work for a lot of fire districts in California. They're small local agencies. And if anybody's familiar with the fire service, back in the late 70s, most of those agencies were volunteer. So those fire districts were not charging a tax rate for substantial salaries and benefits. Additionally, there weren't a lot of criteria set forth for training and some of the requirements for volunteer firefighters that they have today. So the tax rates for a lot of those fire districts were set in the late 70s to be very low, and their share of the property tax revenue that is carried forward since the late 70s, and now we're in 2021, doesn't reflect the actual service and their share of the service that they're providing because now a lot of those small areas that used to be served by volunteer fire departments are built out, and they have to hire career-staffed engine companies, and they have more expensive training requirements and other operational requirements, and think of environmental requirements that they must fulfill, yet they are still stuck with that pre-Prop 13 share of their tax base. And so that's been a pretty big problem with Prop 13. And one of the challenges I see for a lot of those fire districts is they don't have the resources for fire prevention and hiring the staff to actually do the fire prevention activities, let alone the fire... let alone the fire, and fire prevention is kind of that weed abatement, making sure that there are fire breaks and all those important things to prevent fires, let alone the resources to actually put out fires. So that's an example that I bring up here just because I think it'll resonate in Malibu, but it doesn't just apply to fire districts. It applies to other agencies as well. Additionally, since Prop 13 requires that increase in assessed value to be limited to the lesser of 2% or the change in the CCPI, the California Consumer Price Index, it also limits the ongoing revenue stream, and it doesn't allow the revenue stream to keep pace with the operational costs. And in several years, especially in this recent recession, there was actually a decline in value, which resulted in a decline in property taxes, yet the operational costs of the agencies continue to escalate. So the revenue stream set by Prop 13 honestly doesn't reflect the operational cost of the agencies. And luckily, California has continued to grow, or we may see a significant separation of revenue and expenditures for these agencies where the revenue is simply just not keeping pace. And as a result, we may start seeing more other tax measures like parcel taxes or other things. Before I go, I want to see if there's, I want to stop and see if there's any questions. So now we talk about AB-8. So I mentioned after Prop 13, there were trailer bills to talk about the implementation of Prop 13. SB 154 was one. A key one is AB-8 that moved forward in 1979. And AB-8 is an important way, is an important component for how property taxes are allocated moving forward. So we talked about that, what happened with the money from the 70s. But what about how money is allocated moving forward from there? So AB-8 sets the methodology for how property taxes are allocated from a change in assessed value in every single year. So basically, local agencies will receive the amount they received in the prior year plus an increment. The increment is its share of growth, whether it's positive growth or negative growth, due to changes in assessed value within its boundaries. So if you have, and I'm going to use Malibu as an example. So if there is a vacant property in Malibu and all of a sudden a business complex goes up, that will have a significant increase in assessed value, and the local agency serving that new business will receive the benefit of the change in assessed value. AB-8 specifically provided that the increment, that increase in value accrues only to those jurisdictions where the increase took place. So there isn't a kind of a share of that revenue throughout the county. If there is an increase in value in Malibu, that money stays in Malibu for the agency serving where that increase took place. And that is a very important point that I'm going to keep talking about for the next couple of slides. In order to identify that location or that area that these changes in assessed value are taking place, AB-8 created these annual tax increment factors, also known as AB-8 factors. And they really were created in their geographic, their geographic area that really helps a county auditor controller allocate that increment, that increase in revenue. A TRA is a specific geographical area comprised of a unique combination of taxing jurisdictions. So I have this little chart on the side that I like to show because the county is going to have its boundaries, the city is going to have its boundaries, the school district will have its boundaries, fire, water, sewer, whatever the local agencies are. It's where those agencies all intersect is a TRA. Then you're going to have another mix of local agencies that all intersect over here. That's going to be a different TRA. There are over 11,000 TRAs in Los Angeles County, 11,000 unique tax rate areas in Los Angeles County. So that's just an important piece to say that the whole county is now broken down into 11,000, actually 11,692 segments. And property taxes generated in each of those segments are used for these local agencies that provide service to that segment. These, the factors, these AB-8 factors are what were generated originally under SB 154, and they really remain constant from one year to the next. The only way they change is for a jurisdictional change. So if there's a fire district today, but previously the county was providing that service, when the fire district was formed, it would have taken a share of the county's tax revenue, and it would have moved that over to the new fire district. It doesn't just necessarily take a share of everybody's tax revenue. Usually, you look at all the services that are being provided, and the tax revenue that's siphoned off of the new agency is based on the agency that was previously providing the service. If no agency was previously providing the service, then you kind of look to how is it divided in the pot. Usually, that's handled at the LAFCO level. But I got to say, most of the time, I think that money comes from the counties. Each TRA is composed of different types of jurisdictions, but there can only be one unified school district or an elementary district and a high school district. You're not going to have two high school districts or two unified districts. It is one type of agency that provides that particular service to a TRA. So that's kind of an important piece of the TRA. I want to give you even more information on these TRAs because I think this is the crux of the conversation that we're going to have later on related to school separation and where the money is coming from. So this is a map that I actually got directly from the Board of Equalization. So the Board of Equalization is responsible each year for looking at the existing tax rate areas, obtaining information that they receive by December 1 of each year, and determining whether new tax rate areas are needed, and then providing a geographic map back to the counties that shows where all the individual tax rate areas are located. And what this map is, is a color-coded map of the tax rate areas within Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. There are 103 tax rate areas in the school district's boundaries. 11 of them are down here in the Santa Monica area, laser pointer out, down here. And 92 of them are in the Malibu area. And then everybody asks me, is that really going over the ocean? Yes, it's really going over the ocean, because technically, if there are people living on the boats, they would be responsible, they would be served by Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District as well. So this light blue tax rate area is one of your largest ones in Malibu. You have some small tax rate areas. You can see some little ones here that maybe only make up a couple parcels. Some down here that make up a couple parcels. But overall, you've got 92 tax rate areas in this Malibu side of the school district and 11 in the Santa Monica side. The overlapping taxing agencies are funded from these, whichever tax rate areas they serve. So let's, I'm going to go back to fire districts. It's kind of a neutral party here. So the county fire serves the Malibu area. Santa Monica doesn't have a fire district. So there will be a fire district assigned to serve each individual tax rate area, and they will get a share, that AB-8 share, of the 1% general property taxes based on whether they serve this geography or not. So that is kind of the gist of the tax rate area map. I'm going to go onto one more point on tax rate areas, and then I'm going to stop for some additional questions because I think this might answer some more of the questions. So property tax, this is a sample property tax allocation by tax rate area. And this is a tax rate area in, actually in Malibu. It's tax rate area 10-853, and that actually is that nice light blue one I showed on the previous slide. This is the listing that the County of Los Angeles provided for the individual local agencies that directly serve the properties within that tax rate area. You see Los Angeles County General, that's the county itself. They have a Capitol Outlay piece, the county library. You see the fire district has the main fire district. And then there's another fire district piece, but it all goes to the same county consolidated fire district. You see flood control, water, vector control, see the city. And then you start getting into a lot of the schools' line items. ERAF, that's the money that's essentially taken from all the non-school entities and put into a big pot at the county and used to augment the property tax funding for various school districts in the county. A lot of these county school services fund and the children's fund, those go to the County Office of Education. Santa Monica Community College District has a line item. Here's the school district. And then you see the other ones here. They basically go to the County Office of Education. This tax allocation factor is the percent of the 1% general property taxes that goes to each of these agencies from this tax rate area. This number varies from one tax rate area to the next. So just because this is the percentage from TRA 10-853 does not mean it's the percentage from 10-854. I want to call out the city's line item first, and then I'm going to talk about the school district. You see here, it's about 7%. The city gets about 7% of the general 1% from this tax rate area. And then down here, you see the school district has a separate line item, and they get about 15 and a half percent from this tax rate area. I want to make a very clear point. In separation, the school district separates. No part of the city's property tax share would be diverted to the school district. The school district already has a property tax share, and if those agencies separate, they will maintain that property tax share, and it'll just go to the appropriate agency. So I just want to reiterate that. No part of the city's property tax share will go to the school district. They have their own, and that would continue. So I mentioned the AB-8 is allocating the increment. Well, here's the calculation for the increment, and it is simply this tax allocation factor times the increase in assessed value. So you look at the prior year assessed value, see the growth from 1920 to 2021, and you see that there's about 259,000 of increments out of the total 69 million in property taxes generated from this particular tax rate area. This is the share of, this is the share that each of these entities gets from the increment, and we add it to the base here. Now, for this tax rate area, the tax allocation factors were exactly the same in 2019-20 as they are today. There could be changes in jurisdiction, and there's kind of a math problem that adjusts what those factors are. But for the purposes of this example, the tax allocation factors were exactly the same the prior year. So we're simply able to multiply the allocation factor by the prior year property tax revenue that was generated and see how much was generated from each tax rate area. It is the sum of these two that equals the total revenue from each tax rate area. So let's look at the city. The city gets about 4.8 million of its total property tax revenue from this one particular TRA. And you get just a little under 15 million in property tax revenue for 2021. So you can see a large portion really comes from this one tax rate area. It's also the case for the school district. The school district gets just under 11 million, 10.7 million, from this one tax rate area. They have a total of 94 million of property taxes that they were estimating for 2020-2021, and this is how much comes from this one tax rate area. So before we move forward in the presentation, I mean, I've kind of gone through a lot of detail on tax rate areas. Are there questions about this tax allocation system? Then let's.
Kathy has a question.
Yes.
I don't know. It's a question so much as a comment. I really wasn't aware that the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District gets roughly more than twice what we get from our property tax dollars.
That's not unusual, and in fact, I actually thought this was a low percentage. So typically, what I, throughout California, school districts are closer to 30, 35% for a unified school district. And honestly, cities are usually a lot higher. So what's happening here? The county fire district, most fire districts that I see are closer to 3% to 5% to 7%. It looks like the county fire district gets a lot of property tax revenue. So that example I gave you may not apply here. But that's one thing that kind of stood out to me. But yeah, they do definitely get a larger share than the city, which is not unusual. But both the city and the school district kind of get a lower share than I see in most areas.
Thank you.
There's another hand raised from the community. I don't know how the mayor wants to handle that.
Let's hear it.
Yeah. Vardan?
Hi there. This is Ray Educational. Just a quick question, and maybe you'll get into it more, but I wanted to know, while it's unified, it's showing the 10 million. Can you talk about, or will you talk about like how it kind of separates out from Malibu when, you know, when, let's say, it's an independent school district?
Yes. So that's a good question. So right now, this is a Malibu tax rate area. So this tax rate area is, would be served by the future Malibu Unified School District. So, and there is actually a slide later on in the presentation. So if you can hang on, it is really simple, but we're going to show you how Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District is actually substituted by Malibu USD. And that would apply only to the tax rate areas serving Malibu. Those tax rate areas serving Santa Monica would stay with Santa Monica-Malibu USD, which would eventually change its name to Santa Monica USD. I'm going to actually go back a slide and show you what I'm referring to here. So any tax rate area in proposed reorganization, any tax rate area over here would be transferred to the Malibu Unified School District, but it would be the exact same line item, that kind of 15% line item. It's not 15% for every tax rate area. Some it's 13, some it's 17. But everyone would go to Malibu. Those down here would go to Santa Monica. And we'll show you later on in this presentation.
Thank you.
So the other piece, of course, and since we're talking about reorganization, it's important to understand how changes in jurisdiction really impact property taxes. So there's different ways that a change in jurisdiction can occur. There can be the formation of a new agency, and actually, that's what we're talking about here. So SMM USD would continue to exist. It would just have a name change to Santa Monica USD. A new local agency would be created called Malibu USD. Typically, local government receives the property tax revenue from the tax rate areas that they take over based on the service they're providing. So if they're providing the service of schools, they would take that revenue piece. Let me give another example. I like to use fire just because it's, like I said, a little more neutral than some of the other agencies. But let's say that the county had previously been providing fire service, and there was the formation of a new fire district. The fire district wouldn't take all of the county's share of the property tax revenue. It would take a portion of it based on the cost of fire service. And so a portion of the county's share of the AB-8 factor would go to that new fire district. So that's in general how the formation of a new agency would occur. Of course, all of that ends up being subject to negotiation when you're talking about agencies that already exist. And boundary changes occur. Sometimes there are boundary changes against cities, schools, special districts. Those agencies affected by the boundary change negotiate. And I'm going to use an example of most cities. So cities typically have their incorporated territory with a sphere of influence with new development coming in that's unincorporated, but the cities annex them in. So before the annexation, the city doesn't have a line item on the TRA chart, on that tax rate area chart. After annexation, they are providing service to those tax rate areas. They then would receive a share of the property tax revenue, and typically, they negotiate with the county on a tax sharing agreement how much money the county would transfer to the city in order to provide new services to those tax rate areas. There's also dissolution. There are some times when local governments dissolve. I have a couple of examples of healthcare districts that were eventually taken over by the private sector. And so that service was no longer provided by a local government agency. It was now, it's now provided by a private provider that doesn't receive property tax revenue. And one of two things happens. Either those revenues are redistributed to other local agencies, and you kind of tie it to Health and Human Services, so it usually kind of goes to whoever's providing that type of service, or the residents' property tax rates are simply decreased. I have to tell you, that's not very common. Usually, it's redistributed to another local government agency providing the service. So again, with separation, we're really talking about the formation of a new agency. We look at the service being provided and the revenue currently generated for that service in the tax rate areas that are receiving the benefit of the service, and in this situation, education. And that revenue stream would move over to the new local government agency.
Kathy, I think you have a question from Bruce.
Thanks.
First of all, Kathy, I applaud you on this presentation. It's really, it's really easy to follow, and it's very informative, so I appreciate that. Could you go back to the prior slide? I have a question. I'm confused about something.
Sure.
And if you explain this already, forgive me. It says at the top, the property taxes generated for us were 70 million in the prior year or so. And maybe I'm misunderstanding the line. It says, City Malibu, it shows 5 million as the 7%. We happen to be focusing on our budget right now, too, and I was looking at that earlier today. And our budget shows revenue from property tax in the prior year is 14 million or 12 million, and projected now 11. So what am I missing? What's missing from that equation?
This is the tax rate area as a whole, not just the city's share. So this number up here, the 69 million, is the total property tax. So this number up here, the 69 million is the total property tax revenue generated from this tax rate area. And you can see it down here at the bottom as well, the bottom right hand corner. So when you sum up the property tax revenue that goes to each local agency serving this tax rate area totals the 69 million. And that doesn't mean that Los Angeles County only gets 18 million and the city only gets the 4.8 million. This is just how much is generated from tax rate area 10853. And if I go back, that's this blue area. So this area right here generates basically that, that four, oops, wrong direction. That 4.8 million dollars of property taxes for you and 69 million for all combined local agencies.
And so the rest of your property taxes that are on your budget are coming from the other tax rate areas. So if you, if you're, if they estimated your budget is 14 million in property taxes, that means those other boxes, colored boxes, it's the sum of all of those that are, are your property taxes that you get for your budget.
Yeah. So this green area right here is going to generate money for you. This darker green area, the black area, each one is going to have a similar chart. And when you add them all together, that equates to the total property tax revenue that the city gets.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that's a great question. And that's the crux of it. I want you to make sure you understand that. So if we need to go into more detail on that, I'm happy to go back and go through it in more detail.
Kathy, the one thing I didn't know, I don't think I've ever heard you say before, are the number of tax rate areas in Santa Monica versus in Malibu? Does that have to do with the, in terms of the district service? Does that have to do with the fact that in Santa Monica, their tax rate areas are more, are served by a group of agencies that are more homogeneous around the area? Like what, why would there be such, such a huge difference in the number of tax rate areas?
So the city of Santa Monica likely provides more services. So they probably have their own water, their own fire, they, their own police. They probably have their own services under the city's umbrella. So typically it's, or the county provides additional services to that area. Or there just simply aren't the same mix of special districts. You typically see special districts more in unincorporated areas. A lot of that has to do with when a city was incorporated and what the community was like. So Malibu is just more rural. Rural areas tend to not have their own central city services. They tend to, to basically farm that out to other special districts. And then each individual special district is located on the tax bill. Where Santa Monica is likely providing more services in-house. And so they're likely receiving a larger share and probably have been since before the night, before Prop 13 went into effect. And so you'll see that more with bigger cities. They just have less of a mix of other local agencies involved. And so basically, if you look at this, this map, if I zoom in on the map here, you can just see that, minimize the, you can see that even the other little tax rate areas are little. You've got one here. I can barely see any of the other ones. There's actually one right here. But for the most part, it is one main central area, tax rate area. And then something else happening on the outskirts with little things throughout. So it's just more concentrated on services.
Well, they're only going to be defined by the combination of agencies that are providing them service. And so
Exactly.
That if there's one big agency providing a large geographic area with all the services, then it really could be one tax rate area versus the rural nature of what we're seeing on the Malibu side.
Exactly. I actually would say for most rural agencies, this is not unusual to see what we're seeing on the Malibu side. And also just cities that aren't as, it's an urban versus rural kind of thing. And I tend to see more tax rate areas in rural type communities than I do in urban communities.
You have a question from Mayor.
A good example for this is if you look, your arrow is right next to Big Rock right now. And Big Rock has a geologic hazard abatement district, which gives it a different tax rate, which results in it being a different TRA. And there's another one of those on La Costa, and I think there's one of those on Broad Beach also. But that's basically they have, they have different things that have happened over time. And as a result, they have different tax items that show up on their tax bills.
Mosquito and vector control also is another one that is kind of often small, little areas that are put in there. So that's another one. Cemetery districts will often put a layer where you'll have a small little cemetery district. It only affects a few properties. And then bonded indebtedness also impacts the tax rate areas. So to the extent that there are bonding districts that are not overlapping, that would affect the tax rate areas as well. Yes, Bruce?
I have one more question. And I apologize, this is a little, this is off of the subject of the schools, but you have the answer. So where in all of this, if anywhere, is the, not the contract we pay to the sheriff, but the value we get from our taxes for the county sheriff?
So when you talk about contracts, that happens usually after the property taxes are already distributed. So let's look at the county general line item. So the county is getting money for the county sheriff in their county general line item. And again, this is just one tax rate area. They're getting over 18 million from that one tax rate area. The county covers all of Los Angeles County. So usually public safety, and in this situation it is, public safety is really buried in that line item. In, you then have a contract layered on where after the county receives their funding, they then determine how they're going to allocate those services to all of the entities that benefit from it. Now typically, when there's an incorporated city that has their own police service,
Which we do.
The county, which you don't, but Santa Monica would. They have a lower share, the county would receive a lower share of the property taxes. And the city would receive a higher share of the property taxes to compensate for the fact that the county is not providing sheriff service to those TRAs. So there is an adjustment in that TRA allocation factor where the county would probably receive less in Santa Monica. And the city would receive more because the city is providing a service there that the county is not providing.
But some, but some share of this, this money that's coming from us is going to sheriff's department, is going for the benefit of getting sheriff services, even though we are separately paying many millions of dollars, correct?
Exactly. And sheriff services just have a really high impact on a public safety budget. They're very, it's a very personnel intense industry.
How do we, how do we, how, where, or how do we learn what total amount of our taxes are going to LA County for sheriff's services, separate and apart from what we pay on our own?
My guess is they don't separate it by here's how much of the property taxes coming from sheriff's service. But if, because that's typically run through their general fund. So all of this money is going to go into the county's general fund budget. And then you're going to see the contracts coming in also as separate line items. So my, I would refer you to the county budget, but my real guess is you're not going to be able to track the individual dollars. I know you want to, and I just don't. My guess is without analyzing the budget, I'm guessing it's not itemized.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Let me move back through. So this is another important piece that does affect the reorganization. I keep doing that reorganization conversation. And I don't, redevelopment is not something that really applies in Malibu, but it does apply for the school district reorganization. So I do want to spend a few minutes talking about redevelopment because it is very confusing. It is very complicated. And I boiled it down into one slide, but I got to tell you, I've done entire presentations just on redevelopment. So I'm going to try to get this point across as simply as possible. So you have enough information to understand the nuances of the separation agreement. But if you want more information on RDA, I'm happy to keep going. So redevelopment agencies, and here's the first thing everybody says to me. I thought redevelopment agencies were gone. And they are. Redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2012. However, their property tax revenue is, continues to be used to pay the agencies, the former agencies' debts and obligations. So although redevelopment no longer exists, the money is still there and it's still being allocated in the exact same way it was before redevelopment was dissolved. So here's kind of what happens. And I'm going to refer you to the little chart on the page. And it's a kind of a simplistic view, but I think it'll give you the idea. When a redevelopment project area was formed, the tax base was frozen at that point in time. So this right here is the moment that the, this sample redevelopment project area was formed. They froze the tax base. This green area is the amount of money that was generated in, in property taxes. And this green area continues to go to all of the taxing agencies like in the previous charts with those tax rate areas and allocation based on their share from the 1970s. However, any increase in value from that time that redevelopment agency was formed until it is terminated goes to the redevelopment agency and it's called tax increment. And this tax increment is what is used to support the activities of the redevelopment agency. But because the redevelopment agency is diverting any growth in tax revenue. And these are areas that are developing and growing and the tax base is getting bigger. Agencies are having a hard time serving those areas. So a portion of this money is redistributed back to local agencies that are affected by the redevelopment agency in what's called pass through payments. And cities that are affected, cities are the agencies, but they receive them. School districts receive pass through payments. Other affected local agencies receive pass through payments. Those pass through payments must be used in a school world in the combination of property taxes and capital facilities. So some of the money is property taxes and some of the money is not. So it just kind of adds a more complicated layer. In addition, since 2012, when the redevelopment agencies resolved, were dissolved, this pink area wasn't all necessarily needed to pay for the debts and obligations of that redevelopment agency. So the portion that isn't needed is now redistributed back to those other local agencies in what's called residual payments. And for school districts, it's all bundled in in that property tax piece. And so ultimately, a redevelopment agency is formed. All the local agencies get what they always got without any increase, without any benefit of the increase in value. The redevelopment agency benefited from all of the increase in value with a couple of payments given back to those local agencies through what are called pass through payments or residual payments. And then at some point in time, the redevelopment agency will be dissolved because all of their debts and obligations are paid off. At that point in time, the tax base is reset to whatever the value is. And all of the money is then redistributed to all of the affected taxing agencies, just like it would be in any other tax rate area. Why is this important? There is a redevelopment agency within Santa Monica. So currently they're in the midst of this kind of thing where a portion of the money is going to the redevelopment agency. And then the school district receives their ABH share of this green area. And they receive some pass through money and some residual money. The residual money is all just part of their property tax base. And then some of the pass through money though, is above the line. It's considered basically other local funding sources. And in a few moments, Latonya is going to talk to you about other local funding and the importance of other local funding in our proposal. But this is what redevelopment means. In addition, it's important to understand that at some point that redevelopment agency is going to go away, whether it's in 15 years, 20 years, five years, whenever those debts are all repaid, it'll actually result in additional funding to the school district. They will no longer get the pass through payment. They will no longer get the residual payment, but they'll get more property tax money because that won't be diverted to the debts and obligations of the former RDA. So that's my attempt at boiling down redevelopment in the two minute version versus the five hour version. But I'm sure you have questions.
You have, you have a question from Mayor Grisanti.
Another 30 seconds, just, do we know when Santa Monica's redevelopment activities are going to be totally paid for? And they're going to get the bump?
So that's a hard question to answer because it doesn't usually last for the duration of the debt. Typically, there's enough money to pay the debt off in advance. And so I, when I threw out 15, 20 years, that's probably the timeline we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
But I, pinpointing that is almost impossible without understanding what's happening in that tax, without knowing the future growth in the tax base, which is, I would need to.
Which is a guess.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on redevelopment? I'm going to get rid of the laser pointer. And I think you're done listening to me for a little while. And I'm going to pass this over to Latonya, who is really going to be able to explain to you how all this property tax information is important when we're understanding school funding. Because unlike the city, the school funding, the school funding isn't just, hey, here's your property taxes. It's a lot more complicated than that. And then understanding some of the legislation that's occurred in the school funding world is also important, especially as we embark on these negotiations on separation. So Latonya, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak to you again. We think, we feel like we're old friends. We've been before you so many times. But this is important, not just as Kathy said, for, for our constituency, the people who hire us. But there's mixed messages going to the entire, not only school district, but to Laco. So we, this presentation, the Laco County Committee is very interested in seeing it because they know that property taxes and how schools are funded are the linchpin in our negotiations with Santa Monica USD. And as we've talked about before, in other school districts, it's not as important. Property taxes and state aid make up how much money they're going to get. And they really don't care where the, the mix comes from because they have a limit. That's what they're going to get. They don't care how it's made up. But for us, and for these two districts, it's very important because now what you've heard us talk about is basic aid. And this becomes more important. And I'll talk about it a little bit more in the presentation. First slide. So a brief history of school funding. Back in 1968, and you can, I hate to tell people what they already know. So if you know it, you can always stop me or you can raise your hand and say, we know this. But back in 1968, there was a lawsuit brought against a California treasurer, who was priest, nor priest, by the Serrano family, who were part of LAUSD. But, and it highlighted several school districts so that that the disparity in school districts at that time was overwhelming. So Beverly Hills was named in this particular lawsuit because the city, each city would set its tax rate, its property tax rate for its schools or set its rate that would go to its schools based upon the school's budget. So some schools would have large budgets and that city would fund it based upon the taxing rate that they would tax within that city. If you, I don't know if some of you have seen a movie called Bad Education. It's a, it's a school nerd. It's about the fraud. But the one thing about that fraud or, and if you remember in the movie, they were real concerned about the budget. Remember, he was like, no, we can't do this because of the budget. Back east, especially on Long Island and in New York, different districts in New York and on the East Coast, they still fund school districts this way. Every year, a school district submits a budget to their city. The city approves it, and that's a tax that the residents pay themselves for that school's budget for that year. So a budget is approved based upon the tax that they, they approve for themselves every year. It looked, they knew, it knew long, Serrano priests actually were three separate legislations that ended up equalizing payments for school districts. So that there would be a portion of property taxes and then a portion of state aid. And they, the legislation commanded that by 1980, there should be no more than a hundred dollars disparity from either any district. Now, school funding is very complicated. You've heard us talk about it many times. That hundred dollars is lost so, in so many other formulas right now that there's no way I could even go back and find it. But that is what the legislation said. Back in 1972 is when they established the revenue limits, which is based upon this Serrano priest legislation. It was piggybacking it so that it limited how much money a school district could get from property taxes. And, and that went up now to the state of California. And the state of California added to it with its general fund. And then each district was able to get a portion of its, its main revenue, actually. The main piece of its revenue from that mix of property taxes and state aid. And so we were talking about it in our little group. And some of the young people only know the, the. And some of the young people only know the, the, the last block of this slide, which is local control funding formula. Which came in two thousand thirteen. I started at schools in nineteen eighty-six. So I actually still say revenue limit like an old person. Because that's what I learned how to calculate back in eighty-six and up until twenty thirteen. In nineteen eighty-eight, which was coming right out of a big depression. I don't know if you all remember the depression of eighty, well, actually it was right, it's eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight was a, a state. A state depression. Matter of fact, that was when I realized who the governor was. I think the governor was Dugmazian, I believe. Or Wilson, Wilson or Dugmazian, I remember. And, but school funding became so unstable, because the state budget was unstable. That the, the state of California voted for Prop ninety-eight. Which set a minimum funding level for schools. Schools, all schools in California now. Receive approximately forty-one percent of the general fund state budget. Now, you can imagine that, that it's supposed to be the minimum funding. As with anything that's minimum, it comes your maximum. So for mid, for, from nineteen eighty-eight to even now. The state gives us approximately forty-one percent and not a penny more to schools, because it's now become our maximum. But we are fighting with, or competing with hospitals, childcare, jails. Prisons, police, unions and things like that for that same state general fund dollar. But it does make it so, it did try to make it so that school district funding was not as volatile. Now, as I get, I go into the next slide, I do want to talk about, there is volatility though when you're a basic aid. Even when you're a regular school district, because what they did to us in two thousand. And, in the early nineties, when there was state volatility in the budget. And in oh seven, oh eight, oh six, oh seven, oh eight, when they became volatility. They still had to give us the forty-one percent, but they gave us what's called deferrals. I don't know if you, if your school district, you heard them talk about that. That's where they budget the money in the year. They would budget us money in twenty twenty-one. So it looks like on paper, we're getting the forty-one percent, but they deferred the payment of it until twenty twenty-two. So you're really not getting the, but they would be able to count it as their obligation, but you actually didn't get the money. So you got a lot of school districts that went into financial trouble during that time. And I really want to talk about it again on the next slide. Local control funding formula came about in twenty thirteen. And this was when the, the state had rebounded, it was experiencing surpluses in budgets. And they really wanted to change the way that schools were funded. What it has done is also caused, unfortunately disparities amongst school districts. And I'll tell you why. School districts get a base funding level based upon the type of school district that you are. So if you're a unified school district, you get a base funding level. If you're elementary school district, you get a base funding level. And if you're a high school district, you get a base funding level. Then on top of that, with the local controlled funding formula, you get add-ons for special populations. So your special populations are low income, foster youth, homeless youth. And you get some additional money for English language learners. Those are called concentration and supplemental grants. And that's going to become very important if you ever get, if we, when we are successful in a Malibu Unified School District. Because you're going to know, you're going to be, you're going to look at your neighbor, they're looking at us right now. But you're going to be looking at them saying, well, why are they getting so much money, more than we are? Even in a basic aid situation, but it's because of those special populations. I want to give you an example of Torrance Unified. Torrance Unified is its own school district. But Torrance Unified's local control funding formula, its amount of money it gets from the state. Its main source of money is much less than, say, a Lennox Unified. Which is a smaller school district, but Lennox has what they call a, a higher population of these. These special need populations and what we call unduplicated count. I don't want to get into too much school funding. But when you start looking at it, it's like, okay, you think Torrance is a wealthy district, but it's not. It is, it, it's not as, it ends up having to end up raising its own money because of this new local control funding formula. The thing that we're using to our advantage. As we go to the county committee, we go to the state committee, the State Board of Education. Is just that, the intent of the legislature. That the local control will dictate how it spends its funds. So when they, those special populations, they gave them extra money, but they gave those school boards. The authority to determine how they wanted to educate their children. How they wanted to spend the money for the curriculum for the students in their school district. And so it brought, it, it's supposed to give autonomy to school districts. Right now, Malibu has no, Malibu has no autonomy. Most of the concentration and special population money that Santa Monica Malibu Unified receives. Are in Santa Monica, the special populations. That money has to be spent with those children. So by nature of local control funding, we're already at a, a detriment. We're already not funded fairly, because we don't have, because it's intermingled with another population. And the populations are very different. Next slide, Kathy. And so you've seen this slide from us before, and it talks about basic aid. But what I want to talk about, and it talks about how you become basic aid. That if your mix of funding of property taxes and state funding, LCFF, local control funding. Exceeds the limit that this, or exceeds the amount that the state was, was going to give you. You get to keep the excess, the excess property taxes. And we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. But the excess property taxes right now receive to Santa Monica Malibu, about four million dollars. Now, the one thing that is, that I want to talk about, and I'm, I'll do it throughout our time together. The three to five years that it's going to take to get our district. Is that people think we're basic aid, we're rich, we're rich, we're rich, we're rich. We don't need, we're not going to have any problems. Well, the school district is going to have some problems. It won't be rich. It will be able to subsist on its own. It will be able to have a really, well, pretty good funded school district. What it won't have are all those special dollars that I just talked about. So when you have those special dollars designated to EL or homeless youth. You have a little special plot you can handle those from. What your new Malibu school district will have to do is fund those from its general fund dollars. And so I noticed that when I came to, from. Inglewood Unified, and you got, you, you all forgive me for talking about my past districts, but that's why you have me, from my experience. But when I came from Inglewood Unified, back to Torrance Unified, because I, I was there as a special counsel. And I left and came back as the business manager. So, when I came back as the business manager. I was surprised that they were, there was only the basic aid, general fund dollars. And not all this rich categorical money that I had been accustomed to in Inglewood. Not only did I get my additional special, the additional local control funding formula money. The concentration grant, we got one, we got categorical money. Categorical is also for disadvantaged populations. You've heard, yes, Bruce? You're mute.
So if you want to finish your point, go ahead and then I'll ask you the question. I, I didn't want to interrupt.
Oh, so, when you have, what I had noticed when I got back to Beverly Hills. Was all the Title One, Title Two, Title Three and Title Four federal dollars. That I had grown to love at Inglewood. That paid for all my special programs, programs for parents, field trips for students. Additional educational equipment. Were now, were part of the general fund obligation in Beverly Hills. So it was like, oh, you're being punished because you don't, you're, you, they think you're wealthy, but you're not wealthy. You have to now come up with the money for field trips for your own kids. For special computers, for special after-school programs. All of that becomes on the dime of the general fund. Where a school district with a variant population has not only categorical money. And basic state aid, LCFF, and they have the supplemental concentration grant.
So, so maybe the answer is simply theory and reality, you don't mesh. But I, I'm not following that, because I, I would, I think the theory behind these categorical funds is categorical expense. That certain segments of the population cost a school district more money to give equivalent education. And therefore they get supplemental categorical revenue to do that. I would think that if we are segregated out and we don't have the categorical expense. It wouldn't matter that we don't get the categorical income. I don't understand how that creates a disparity.
Normally with, it, it, that, your logic and how the money is allocated is exactly their logic. That these populations cost more to educate. But what ends up happening with that money, and I, you'll, if you pay attention to school districts, there's something called. An LCAP, it's the local control academic program. So now, you, what you have to do with that money is develop educational programs. That cater directly to those populations. So now you'll see dual immersion, dual language immersion programs that are coming out of that money. You'll see after-school enrichment programs coming out of that money. You'll see, that's where a lot of the take-home computers, the take-home laptops. Come out of that money that go to that special population. But your, your other ki, your kids that are not part of that. They would, they would love to enjoy those same types of things. One of the things that, like I said, that I, I thought was, I, I had to budget a lot of money for field trips. In Beverly Hills, to go to Yosemite, to go to Clear Creek, to go to. The marine aquarium, and I'm like, why is the general fund paying for these field trips? In Inglewood, and some of my other districts, most of my other districts, the categorical money would be paying for those field trips. Not the general fund. And that general fund is the same money that you're using for salaries as well. So you have more competition on your general fund than you would if you had those categorical populations. So I'm not saying that we wouldn't be doing well, but your school district is going to have some deficits. That, that inherent in not having a lot of streams of money. Because your basic main money is going to be property tax dollars. Now.
Are you, are you saying that in essence, are you saying in essence, the categorical revenue in other places, take Santa Monica for example, is being used? To benefit, among others, the non-categorical portion of the population?
It does.
Okay, so, so, so we wouldn't have the opportunity to do that, to, to, to perpetuate that wrong?
No, we would not have the opportunity to perpetuate that wrong. But what you will have, and that's where local funding that you're, that even, and I know that you've had it before. That's where your education foundation, your parcel tax, PTAs in your school districts. That's why they raise so much money, so that it doesn't come from the general fund. So that this, the, the, the general operating expenses end up coming out of the general fund, which are teacher salaries. Operating expenses and things like that. And you can still enjoy a, a, a really high enriched education. That you, that comes from local funding and property taxes and basic aid. And so, the one thing that you hear us talk about as well is deep into basic aid. Deep into basic aid, which is good. Which means it, usually, unless there's a, a, a economic slump. You continue to grow. So every year, the money you get grows based upon that increment factor that Kathy talked about in her presentation. So instead of getting the same amount of money from the state. We grow. We get an additional amount per student or per, per tranche of property taxes that we get. Where it becomes important for a basic aid district, and you'll hear them talk about it when they are. When they exist, and I, I, I missed a point that I wanted to talk about there. But where it becomes important is that basic aid districts have to be fiscally prudent. They cannot be spin thrives. They can't go through and say, oh, look at this, we got thirty million. We're going to spend thirty million this year. In a school district, they're going to, they can do that, because guess what, guess what they're going to get next year? Thirty million. From the state, or thirty-one million. In a school district that is basic aid, if there's a downturn in the economy. And there is a negative growth. In the case of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. You get less money than you had in the prior year. Which never happens in schools unless you're basic aid. So as a basic aid district, you are, you, the, the county. But a good business manager will tell that school board. You need to reserve between twenty-five to thirty percent of your money in reserve. Which is a large reserve, but you grow that reserve so that you never have a situation. Or you can ride out a bad economic turn and you don't have to immediately go in and cut your budget.
I could ask just one last question on that before, and I'll be done on this categorical issue. So if, if you divide the, the Malibu students from the Santa Monica students. Do we have students in San, in, in Malibu who would, who would qualify us for categorical revenue? Or is it entirely in the Santa Monica portion of the student population?
No, you would have some. You absolutely would have some. You're, I think we calculated your, your unduplicated count. Would be similar to Palos Verdes, Beverly Hills, San Marino. Which is about eight to nine percent of your population. It's a small percentage.
Okay, and right, and right now, if I understand, a hundred percent of the dollars that are being given to the school district. For the ninety percent of the students in Santa Monica who qualify and the ten percent or so in Malibu who qualify are being spent in Santa Monica.
I can't say that, but we know that they have many more programs than you have in Malibu. And that's where, that's how they're justifying not, probably not giving Malibu equal service. It's like, they're not giving you equal service with your general fund, unrestricted dollars. And they're not giving you equal service with the concentration dollars as well. So the one thing, when you talked about Mayor Grisanti, about the school district not, not coming out of the city's dollars. Once a school, just, once the state says yes, you can have a school district and there's an election. And if the people vote yes. A school board is its own sovereign body. They're sovereign just like you are. You're, they're elected, they can tax them, they can put a tax on the ballot. To be voted upon in terms of a general obligation facilities bond, if they so deem. They are responsible for themselves, they're responsible for their own budget. They're responsible for their own budget, and their governing agency would then be California Department of Education. So although you all would work together as community members, and it would actually give, in, in Beverly Hills, the school district and the, and the city council work closely together. Matter of fact, in, in this week's paper, the school district and the city just did a joint participation agreement where they share facilities and, and finance and, and pay, and revenues. And so the city actually gets to help dictate the goals of the school district, because you work hand in hand, but you are no, you will not be responsible for the school district. The other thing that is allowed, and we've talked about it here before, is that once the school district is formed, and if it is allowed to be formed, then, then they can, in EDCO, there is a provision to reimburse the city for the funds that it is spending to create it. Now, they might not be able to do it in one budget year, but there should be a line item set up over a period of time to reimburse the city for the costs, some of these costs that you are incurring to create the school district. That is in the law, the EDCO for school districts that are newly, newly created.
Latonya, before you go to the next slide, I want to just bring up one more point. And that is, just to be clear, Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District currently is funded from both this, this LCFF funding level, $4 million of excess taxes, and they receive a substantial piece, the federal programs Latonya's talking about, and they receive other local funding. And I don't want to lose that piece, because that other local funding is a significant part of their unrestricted general fund. Relative to other districts, they actually get a significant piece. That's the parcel tax. It's some, a joint use, parcel tax, the redevelopment pass-through money. Remember, we talked about some of that's property taxes, but some of it's not. Some of that other local funding is the part that's not property taxes. They also have some agreements with the City of Santa Monica, and they get a portion of the sales tax from Santa Monica. Many of those other local funding sources in separation would be retained by the Santa Monica Unified School District, because those revenue sources were generated in Santa Monica. When you translate that on a per-student basis, they're, they're basically losing 15% of their student population, but maintaining the revenue stream, which helps kind of their dollar go a little bit further. It increases their per-people funding. So I just didn't want to lose that point as we were talking about where their funding comes from. LCFF is important, their basic aid, their excess taxes, these federal dollars. We can't lose sight of the other local as well. It's, it's 40 to 50 million, it's substantial.
It's very significant, and thank you Kathy, because I was, I had forgot to mention it. And just that, that local control funding that they get to keep, that local control revenue is not only substantial, because I used to look at it as a CBO in all of my other districts. You have very few districts in California that are getting a portion of the sales tax of a city. It's, it's not heard of. It's, it's, it's very generous. A parcel tax within itself given for a school district. Most school districts are just happy to get a parcel tax as its additional local income. So to get a parcel tax, redevelopment money, sales tax money, and then of course, the local money that comes from their real estate holdings is, is a, a large piece of their local control. And we've had to isolate that, that, because that has become one of our sticking points in our negotiations. And you've heard us talk about this, and you'll hear us talk about it again, again and again. We will not, we do not want them to split or to count, equalize our funding until you count all of that money. Initially, they just wanted to count all of our property taxes, local control funding, all of their property taxes, local control funding, and then we give them money based upon that. And they get to keep all that other local control funding, local control revenue, I'm sorry. And it's not factored into the revenue neutrality. And so we found it out, we stopped, we said, no, we will not agree to anything that doesn't, in fact, and I'm, your city council person, ex-city council person, Rick Mullin, was the one who was like, no! They have to include all of their money before we talk about how much money we give them per pupil. So that's, that was the basis when we first started these negotiations back in 2018 on the per-pupil revenue. Because each, it's not just local control, it's how much money each student gets per head for us and them, before we talk about how much money transfers from Malibu back to Santa Monica. Yes, Mr. Silverstein?
So, I, I, I understand the logic to that argument. I understand the logic to the counterargument as well. Is there guidance somewhere in, in, in the way this is done that answers the question of which logic prevails? Or is it just a question of a negotiation and see who blinks?
You, you had a really good transition there, because that's next. So let's, let's really just go into, at the time, maybe I'll just jump in real fast and to-
That's fine.
Answer Bruce's question with this slide, because there is guidance. And I think that guidance is really important. So the Revenue Taxation Code specifically provides that when there is going to be a change in jurisdiction, there is a process that the county assessor and the county auditor go through in order to determine what the property tax amount is for a particular jurisdiction based on the territory they're serving. So we go back to the conversation we had earlier about the TRAs, and you've got a local agency that's providing service to a tax rate area. It, there's one local agency of every type, of any type that provides service to that tax rate area. When that service changes to another agency, there is a math problem that can be done to figure out how much in property taxes goes to that new agency. And the Revenue Taxation Code actually spells that out. Essentially, the assessor provides the county auditor with the tax rate areas that are affected by the change in jurisdiction. The county auditor then does the math problem that figures out how much in property taxes is generated from that service area that's affected by the transfer. Those numbers are provided to the agencies that are changing the jurisdiction. Then there is a negotiation. So typically, if you're providing a service to an agency, to, to citizens, and you change the service to a different provider, you would just move the money over to the new provider. That's kind of the logical answer. But of course, you need to make sure that that entity that's left behind is made whole and isn't going to suffer. So as a result of that, there are agreements that are put in place, like tax-sharing agreements that you may have heard of. The city in fact has tax-sharing agreement, where you share in the tax revenue for maybe a period of time to ease in that burden, or there's other reasons why you may share in the, in the tax increment. For example, I always bring up fire districts, but it's a really good example. Oftentimes, they, they serve unincorporated territory. And when cities annex in property, they lose that tax revenue right off the bat. But they still have to provide the exact same amount of service. They can't just reduce firefighters, because they're no longer serving that area that's annexed. So there's often 10-year phase-in agreements where they have declining revenue over time that they can make up for so that they don't have to just make immediate cuts to their budget. It's that concept that we're using today. So is there a specific formula? Yeah, they, the Revenue Taxation Code spells out what that math is. And then you use that information to either allocate, just separate and allocate the property tax revenue, or you use it for a negotiation?
Right, so I'm not, I'm not sure that that did answer my question. It might have, and I didn't understand it, or it may not have. I understand that there's a formula for allocating the property tax, looking only at the property tax. My question was directed to the other supplemental taxes that are being received in Santa Monica, from Santa Monica. Is there guidance as to whether that does or does not get lumped into the analysis of how much of the taxes are being received by Santa Monica? Because I can see the logic of, well, we're getting that voluntarily from our folks. Why should we share, why should that be counted in the allocation? And I can see the logic of it should be counted in the allocation. So I'm wondering how that's done historically in other situations?
So it's, it is negotiated, but the California Department of Education has a handbook on reorganization. And they provide guidance in that handbook. Doesn't mean that that's what's spelled out and that you have to do it, but there is guidance. Typically, the agency that is, that where it's generated, where the money is generated, is where the money stays. So in this situation, the redevelopment is really clear. That money is generated in Santa Monica. It stays in Santa Monica for the benefit of the taxpayers in Santa Monica. Sales taxes, you can make an argument on sales taxes, because I, I have to say, do you think just the people in Santa Monica are the only ones spending money in Santa Monica? Maybe not. But for the purposes of the CDAN handbook, Santa Monica has, the City of Santa Monica has an agreement with the school district. Therefore, since the City of Santa Monica would be within the Santa Monica, Santa Monica Unified School District, I would presume that that money would stay with that district. So the guidance from the Department of Education is that the money stays where it's generated.
Okay, so no, I would, I would have assumed that as well. I mean, I can understand there might be an argument to the contrary. But I thought I was hearing Latonya say that we're arguing that they, that, that they need to consider that amount of money in the amount that's totally available to be split, and that it's not fair to exclude that and consider that to be just theirs.
Different, that's a different nuance. Yes, so I hear what you're saying. That's a little bit different than what I think Latonya was saying. So what Latonya's saying is when they're looking at their budget and whether they're going to be able to sustain the education of their future students, they're looking at this LCFF and the property tax calculation. They're not necessarily incorporating the other local funding into their model when they determine whether they're going to have enough money to educate their students. So that's a little bit different than, we are not saying, we are actually saying in our proposal, which we'll talk about in a moment, that the other local funding would stay where it's generated.
And you have to count it in your per-pupil formula before you ask us for any money. So that amount per student that includes all of those sources is your per-pupil revenue. Then we'll look at how much money we would give you based upon your loss, your loss of money. And we have other criteria that we have to meet. But we initially, in the first year, year and a half of our negotiations, they didn't want to include that other revenue, that local revenue, and they only wanted us to equalize them, give them Malibu revenue based upon, on just property taxes, not all that other money that they were going to get per pupil. And we felt that was definitely not fair, because you're, you're going to get that, and it's going to be per pupil, and we'll have just property taxes, pretty much. And our parcel tax, if we, we continue that. So we'll keep our parcel tax, and they'll keep their parcel tax.
So now, can we, can we make the argument that because, that we don't, we, it doesn't have to be that that other money is, stays with them and is theirs and doesn't get prorated? And the fact that we're willing to just give that up ought to be a significant factor in the other allocation?
It absolutely should be, Mr. Silverstein. And when they did the MUC report, the municipal unification, that was a major give in that report that they, that those two communities, those two people, those six people gave to say, okay, we're going to walk away from that. We're going to let, we're not going to fight for that. If you let us, you know, if you let us go, we're not going to fight, because when the sales tax was put in place, it was put in place for all the students of Santa Monica-Malibu School District. We're going to walk away with the Malibu students and not ask for any of it. Let us go.
Okay, thank, that's good, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Grisanti, I think you had a question.
Yes.
It actually was more of a statement. The, the problem that we've had with Santa Monica is they persist in trying to minimize, they try to play poor with their, their, their students are going to be severely disadvantaged by this, and just look at the disparity in the property taxes and ignore the other money. And that's why what Latonya has been talking about is so important. And I really appreciate you making that extremely clear to me, because I got to admit, it wasn't, this has never been well-flushed out in my own mind. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, as I go forward, you're going to hear another area where they're saying they're really poor, and it's going to really blow your mind, mind-blow, because it blew my mind, because it's like, you're counting money you don't even have, but I'll get to that in a, in a moment.
I'm looking forward to it.
I will say we have about 15 more minutes and five more slides, so if we can move through.
Okay.
Thank you, Christine.
So I, I just want to quickly show you with this jurisdictional change just what we're talking about. And you all remember this, this table with the TRA factor? This is that sample TRA again. And you see the money that once went to Santa Monica-Malibu would simply be replaced with Malibu. We wouldn't be taking money from the city. The school district line item, the percentage would remain the same, and that 10.7 million remains in place. That's really how it happens. It, it can be that simple. So, so that kind of wraps up that piece of it. I, I want to turn it back over to Latonya and to go through the proposals. And now that you have this background on property taxes, maybe you'll understand some of the nuances, the proposals, and the differences in our arguments, and the interpretation of how the school district is interpreting our proposal versus what we're really saying.
And, 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 and we did have, just to, we had a consultants meeting with us and the Santa Monica-Malibu consultant, just so we understood some of these things that they've been saying and some of the things we've been saying. So you all voted upon and gave us a ratified and approved for us to give our, our last best final offer that we gave to them in March. It allocated property taxes that are currently distributed to SMMUSD to the new school districts based on the revenue generated in the TRAs served by each school district, the geographical areas. This is the way it's done in every school district that I know of in the State of California. The area, the school boundaries of that school district and the tax rate areas of those school boundaries are how it receives its property taxes. That is what we have put in our proposal. We would provide additional tax revenues from Malibu to Santa Monica in order to fully fund their LCFF amount and keep the state whole. So when we split initially, we would be basic aid. The state would only give us a minimum amount of money, but we would be able to have approximately 31 million or almost $20,000 per student, per student head. I'm just using round figures, based upon when that split occurred. The state wouldn't have to be, we would not be any burden to the state. As it stands right now, today, if it happened, Santa Monica would not be basic aid on their own. And so we would have to go in as Malibu to meet the requirement by the state and backfill that amount that would make them basic aid. So the state has no additional burden by the creation of these two new school districts. The, we are, we would allocate funding from Malibu to Santa Monica for up to 10 years if excess property taxes and other local funding declines. We made this offer, this is above and beyond what the state would require us to do. We did this because the Santa Monica-Malibu superintendent expressed that he was concerned that the other local funding would decline and that they would have less money per pupil than they have today. So we added it, and he was talking about the sales tax, the parcel tax, and things like that. So in our offer, we said we would make sure from Malibu that we would keep you where you at least are today. You, you would not decline based upon the loss of other local funding. And we already know that we're, we're backfilling the state portion. So our, our offer, our last best and final was more generous than even what the state actually would require us to do. Next slide. As Santa Monica-Malibu's concerned with our proposal, they do not believe that there is a way to calculate the property taxes geographically. We don't understand it. We, they, they think it's all one homogeneous, property taxes are all together, there's no way to break them out, and we have the formula to break them out, that they can't be tax rate areas. But in a way, that's disingenuous because RDA is geographical, and they're going to keep that, and that's property taxes. But in their arguments, they believe that our proposal is flawed because geographically, we cannot break out property taxes based upon TRAs. They also feel that since property taxes were based on pre, the initial base back in 1978, 43 years ago, was based upon the total district, that somehow they're going to get less than what they deserve because back in 1978, 79, or when Prop 13 was, the ABA factor was calculated, it was one total district. So they don't feel that it's possible to do this. We disagree. There's a lot of things that we just vehemently disagree with that, of course, you could, you can break it out based upon 43 years of growth in tax rate areas. We know where our tax rate areas are, we know what your tax rate areas are. Once they split up geographically, we feel that it can be done. The district's interpretation, this is the one that's going to blow your mind, Mayor Gassanti. The district's interpretation of the city proposal is that there will be a significant shortfall that would result in significant budget cuts, estimated at approximately 19 million. You've heard this in the media, in the speeches, we're going to have to cut programs. If they split off, we're going to have to cut 19 million of programs. Now, I've already told you that most of those programs are funded by us categorical funding, different pots of money. So I asked them, how are you going to have to cut programs if most of the programs are for the same kids you already have, and you're going to keep that money? They showed it to us. In their estimations, they calculated what they would have gotten from us for the next 50 years if we stayed together. So they're looking at our property tax growth after we split. And if we stayed together, they would still be getting approximately $3,000 per student. And that's what they're calculating as the money they're going to lose once we split. Yes.
Is it correct that they aren't reducing their expenses by the money they currently spend to educate Malibu students?
We asked them that, and I don't, we don't know why that, not only will they be educating 15% less students, and you'll have 15%, 15% less overhead, why doesn't your budget reduce? But they don't talk about that. And so when I asked them about what programs, how can you be cutting? And we actually went into it, because how can you have to cut 19 million in programs when currently today, you only receive 4 million in excess property taxes? So if we leave, how does that result in a $19 million hit? Again, they're looking at, so when they talked to us, they told us it's not programs, it's total budget. We're not going to have to actually cut programs. We feel that if we're not getting all of your money, we're going to have to cut some of our overhead. And that's the $19 million hit over. So it's not real money because we're not together anymore. And that's what I said, how can you calculate a cut on money revenue that is not your revenue?
I want to, I want to just interrupt really quickly. I know we have five more minutes, so I just wanted to make sure we're good on time. I don't see any questions from the community, but we do have to have time for public comment. So I just want to make sure we get to our last couple of slides. Latonya, do you want to close up here?
Yes, so the, 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 the major difference is that they want to allocate the property tax based upon enrollment. They want to take the entire property tax increment and, 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 and split it based upon enrollment. But Kathy, go to the next slide, because this is very important, because we don't think this can be done. Anyhow, we really don't. We think, Kathy?
Do you want me to speak to this? So.
About the ABA split in the geographical.
We talked about the TRAs and that every tax rate area is assigned one service provider based on that type of service. So you picture that geographic map of the tax rate areas that I already showed you. We can't have both Santa Monica and Malibu School District on the same TRA chart. They are, it is a geographic map based on the entity that is providing service. You can layer what's called a tax sharing agreement on the top. And that's where the money is, kind of changes hands. But when you implement that, it needs to be a proposal that can be calculated. It needs to be formulaic that the county can actually do the calculations on. And something that's based on a student enrollment number that varies from one year to the next is going to be quite difficult to administer. So we also, as Latonya mentioned, we're concerned that the formula didn't equitably take into consideration that other local funding. So when they're talking about this, this distribution, they're wanting all of the future Malibu property tax revenue accounted for in their, their lost money, as well as it's unclear on how the, the other local funding would be, how it's taken into consideration. So those are some of our main concerns of the proposal and just the pure dollars of it. The proposal as set by the district requires about $250 million of Malibu property tax money moving to Santa Monica for the first 10 years and about 4 billion, and that is with a B, not an M, a $4 billion number over 50 years. And frankly, I can't imagine your taxpayers in Malibu being satisfied with their money leaving the community for that, that quantity of money leaving the community for that duration. So, and I'm just going to sum it up real fast, just in essence of time. Just some key takeaways that I want to make sure everybody has before we do some public comment is property tax funding for local agencies is derived from the proportion of taxes raised pre Prop 13 plus growth in your own local tax base on that TRA basis. School funding is from a combination of those property taxes and state aid and was before Prop 13. Just make that up is a key point. So because the district is now basic aid and only has been since 2018, they do receive excess property taxes in addition to that local control funding. It's about $4 million, and there's another about 50 million in other local funding. Essentially, the biggest difference between the city's proposal and the schools, the district's proposal is related to the allocation of property taxes. The city is proposing more of a geographic proposal. The school district is proposing a student enrollment breakdown for their proposal. So those are the key pieces in the various proposals.
And we feel that we, you have three financial people, financial school people who separately feel that this is a sound proposal, which is why we've advised our ad hoc committee, we've advised the city council that if we were to have a mediator, impartial mediator that made, if they were to agree to that, there's no way to get to school funding other than geographically. We know school funding, it's our livelihood, it's our business. We know that a third-party administrator, I mean, a third-party mediator, arbiter can only get to school funding geographically because there is no template for splitting property taxes by enrollment. As Kathy said, it's not even, we don't even think that it's possible because you can't put two school districts in one TRA.
Just procedural question, I understand, I'm not objecting to two hours, but where was the hard stop of two hours set? Because I didn't, I didn't know we had it coming into this meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Silverstein, it was just, it was a timeframe that we provided the council as to how long we were going to take, and so I wanted to be respectful of the council's time. It's not, it's, if you'd like to extend us more time, as you can see, we could talk about this forever, but I just wanted to be sensitive to the eight o'clock.
You just got us started, come on.
I promise we'll let you answer all the questions that get asked.
Thank you.
It's really time for public comment at this point. So I'm going to start.
Could I ask two questions? Could I ask two questions that I think will also help clarify further? Unless it's not already obvious, smaller schools and smaller school districts are more expensive to operate. And we, we know that here in Malibu. And we're reminded by the district that there are things here that they think they spend more on proportionately because, you know, Malibu High, I think, is between 500 and 600 students right now. Samo High is, I believe, over 2,000. So, you know, I just think that that further proves the point. Our schools are more, more expensive to operate. We don't, we don't have the economy of scale that the Santa Monica schools have and that the Santa Monica district would have. But also, in addition to that, and I think Kathy, you and I may have discussed this recently, one of us did. Santa Monica also, in their demand, expects a gift of public funds. So that, to me, is a non-starter.
Karen, you make very good points. And we've looked, the person cost is over, I believe, I believe it is over 2,000 per student more to operate Malibu schools than the Santa Monica schools. And a lot of that has to do with the small nature of, it's not just small school size, but small class size, and the rural nature of the community, and we have transportation issues. And it's just a more expensive school system in Malibu than it is in Santa Monica. It's just not as efficient, which is also part of the reason that a lot of the programs are over in Santa Monica because they can't efficiently be run in Malibu, given the overall budget constraints. But as a basic aid district in Malibu with a rapidly increasing tax base, that's the potential to add in some of the programs or more focused programs that respond specifically to the needs of Malibu's families. And I think that's the important point, is it more of a custom approach to using the same dollars.
Mayor Pearson?
Not Mayor anymore.
I mean, County Commissioner Pearson, I'm sorry.
Used to be Mayor Pearson. I think too, that when I, you know, every time I listen to us going through the finances, I think what makes it interesting, just to give it context, is that going to the county committee, what's very unique is that we're going as a city petitioner. And that's, I gather, the first time that's been done. So it adds an element of unknown on how the process at this point works out. And, because when you describe the finances, as complex as they are, it's so obvious and it's so clear. But then it seems to turn into a giant jumble, potentially, at the county committee. It's hard to know what they're thinking, and it's hard to know, you know, what else is going on in the background there. So it makes this process where, end result is, we need as many people as possible to show up and support because the facts are on our side. And thank you very much for that great presentation.
Mayor Gassanti?
Yeah, based on what Mikey just said, I'm wondering if at some point we haven't approached the County of Los Angeles about joining us in this petition since a substantial amount of the school children in the Malibu, future Malibu Unified School District will include kids from the county area who are currently in 90265, basically.
And where do those kids go to school now?
They go to Malibu.
He's talking about the unincorporated piece of Malibu, so outside city limits. It's an interesting concept.
It's an interesting concept.
Yeah, we haven't explored that. That's something, that's something that we should need to talk about in our working group. Christine, have we, was that before, did we explore that at all before my time?
No, we have never explored that, that isn't very interesting.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yeah, I suspect we may have some comments as opposed to questions at this point, but are we not supposed to go to public comment before we do that?
Do we have any, any public comment?
We just have one speaker signed up, so it'll be quick, we'll hear from David Kramer.
Thank you, David. Are you there? I see you're unmuted.
I had earlier sent you an email concerning where we are with LACO and what they can do for us as a mediator with Santa Monica. But in listening to the presentation tonight, I had a, really just two, two questions. One is, the issue with Santa Monica have to do with the TRA of 10 million 731, is that the monies that they're trying to get from us?
No, that was just an example TRA that shows where the money is coming from. Their argument is that all of the property taxes, whether they're generated in Malibu or generated in Santa Monica, are in one big pot, and they should not be divided up geographically, they should be divided up based on student enrollment. The challenge from the Malibu side is about over 35%, actually, it's about 2, it's about 36% of the property tax revenue is generated from Malibu, but only 15% of the kids come from Malibu. So there's a disproportion from where the money is coming from versus where the children are coming from. And as a result, in the long term, that would be a significant disadvantage to the Malibu community and would result in 250 million leaving the Malibu community for Santa Monica over the first 10 years and about 4 billion over a 50-year. And Karen brought up a concern with gift of public funds, and I think that's a legitimate concern.
So therefore, it's a combination of this 10 million 7 and, I think it was 4 million 8 in property taxes on that TRA schedule?
It's, it's all, if you remember the map, it's, we're talking about all of the property tax revenues generated from all the tax rate areas, not, that was just one sample. That was one small light blue geographic area. What they're wanting is all of the money generated, they're saying all of the money generated throughout the entire Malibu community is part of the communal pot. So it, it's, they, the school district has a total of $94 million, and they say that's one communal pot that they want to allocate 15% of that going to Malibu and the remaining 85% going to Santa Monica.
Okay, thank you. And the other, the other concern I had during your presentation, and thank you very much for all the work that you put into this. But what bothered me was the categorical money and how that's going to benefit the special needs students in Malibu. Because I spent at least, I don't know how many years, at least a half a dozen years on one of the district advisory committees sponsoring Malibu to get services out in Malibu from Santa Monica. It was just a, it was just an issue after issue, presentations to the board. And, you know, my whole, my whole thing was, let's get these services out to these special needs and categorical students in Malibu. And listening to the presentation tonight, it seems like there needs to be some work in making sure that they're taken care of.
Well, that would be why we're doing, in this fight. I mean, when you say, make sure that it's happening, is to make sure that we can use the money that is generated in Malibu for Malibu needs. Now, when it comes to special education, children, special ed dollars, now we would still receive as part of the SELPA, the Special Ed Local Control Plan, we would become part of the same SELPA as Santa Monica. And so the dollars that are allocated federally for special ed education would still come to Malibu. So the Malibu special ed kids, special ed, not the Title I, Title II, No Socioeconomic EL, those categories, but special ed, we would still continue to receive those federal dollars through the SELPA. But most districts have to contribute as well to special ed. So you would then see, again, more attention, attentive to how those services are provided and provided in a more concise. attentive to how those services are provided and provided in a more concise, controlled manner than the kids not getting the services. You, you see that a lot in smaller school districts where the special ed kids actually get better services because you've decided now it's not a one model for a huge school district.
Mr. Kramer, I think though what you're pointing out is, and expressing your concerns to the school district, I think it just is a demonstration of how little local control Malibu residents have and how little input you have, right? So whether it's a concern about the special, how special ed programs are administered, or the fact that Malibu students haven't had an ELL teacher in 20 years, all of those things contribute to the fact that Malibu residents who have concerns about those things don't have anyone at the district level who responds and then reflects the desires and the priorities of the community, which is something that we would hope and believe very strongly, just by the nature of a representative, you know, democracy, you would have better influence over an independent Malibu Unified School Board and being able to, you know, express to them which your interests, your priorities are. And then also, I mean, going back to something I think Councilmember Silverstein said in his comments, you know, before the Laco County Committee. And if you don't like them, then you have, you know, your right as a registered voter to vote them out. You don't have those options now. And that's that the local control is a huge part of what we're after, so that we can represent those interests and priorities, for sure.
Yeah, that's a huge point there. Well, thank you very much. Is it possible to get to have these slides sent to me? I'd like to review them.
They are part of the agenda, Mr. Kramer?
Well, they're part of the agenda. Okay.
Yes.
I can get them.
I, I see we had another, I don't know if there's a, if we have an opportunity, Kelsey, to take another question?
Wade Major has raised his hand, and I saw Karen raised her hand early as well.
That would be up to the mayor at this point. I don't have any other formal signups.
I'm in favor of recognizing Karen if she, because she raised her hand before Wade and then Wade.
Oh, please take Wade first.
Wade, you're up. Can you unmute Wade there?
Yes. So, so just so that I understand completely, the, their proposal disallows the, a clean break. I mean, if we are still tied together in this kind of one bucket financing scenario, what we want as a city is a clean break. A clean break in terms of administration, clean break in terms of money. They don't want us to have a clean break. They want us to continue to be beholden to a broader financial formula. So at the risk of sounding really, really rude, how is this different from the economic arrangement of serfdom in the Middle Ages or even sharecropping in the United States in the 19th century?
Not much. We've called it colonialism in our working group. It's not different from colonialism. And you're 100% correct that I, I, my exact question is, have you told your board that when we break, we're separate? You don't get to look over the fence and count the money that you would have gotten if we were still together? That you can't use that as your argument? And, but, so, but that is exactly what they are doing. And that's why when you hear those figures that are being spouted, it's funny money. It's not real money. It's not money that they have or are gonna get. It's propaganda money.
Okay, that was it. I just wanted to make sure I, I understood that, because that's an outrageous thing for them to ask. And I, and I was trying to think, well, maybe there's something more rational to it, but you've corroborated. There is nothing rational to it.
I will temper a little of the conversation, just because when you look at kind of the legal standards, there is a, there is a goal, I think, and just in terms of resources and time and effort, there would be a better outcome if we were able to present to the Laco County Committee in an agreed, with an agreement between parties, right? So it is going to be incredibly much more costly and take a lot more time to erect an independent Malibu Unified School District if we continue to do this as a city before the county committee. If we are in some position to be able to go before the county committee in agreement with the district, then this becomes a much smoother process. And you still have all of the uncertainty of what the county committee will decide, what the county committee will do. What makes, and I think that is what makes Santa Monica, the district, so adamant and kind of headstrong about their position, right? Because they, they believe very strongly, as long as we have to negotiate with them or we have to go directly to Laco and risk Laco not being favorable to a city, not being favorable to our financial proposal, not being favorable to all these things, then they feel like they have a much stronger negotiating position. That's what we've seen in the three years I've been involved. I'm sure that's what Councilmember Farr has seen and and probably the Monk people before. So we just, that, that's the one reason why we come back to the idea that it's in everyone's best interest to consider possibly having a mediator involved who can start to help educate not just not just the, the district's council consultants, but the district's board, right, as to what's really reasonable, what's really true, the idea that, you know, you can take property taxes based on traws and not based on this per pupil or the proportion of pupil enrollment. I, I, we, and I think Mr. Kramer brought that up. Our goal is really to start to educate the district's board as well as to what's really feasible and why the numbers maybe not be exactly what, what they've been presented with. So just to temper that a little bit, we think their proposal is absolutely ridiculous, but we still need to be in a posture of negotiation because it's in the city's best interest to go in agreement.
Karen?
Okay, this is a question for any of the financial consultants or Christine. Can any of you think of any school district in California that's legally required to provide funding to another school district?
I'm not aware of that. Well, but there is an example. I don't think that happens, but I do think Kathy has an example because she shared it with me and I thought, I think it's, is it Placerville? Or Terry got on camera, so I don't know if she has an idea about this, but how a school district with with a population similar ours, with a very rural population with a very expensive, that's very expensive, much more expensive than the urban population to serve, how that can happen in a way that creates equity for even the rural population? And that's what's not happening in Malibu. So it's not to say that it can't happen, but the district has made a decision of priorities. They've made a policy decision not to serve the students in Malibu in a way that's equitable, but it does not have to exist that way.
And I do have that. I was the one that gave you that example, Christine. And it's actually my local school district, so my son is the one experiencing it. So, and they are my client as well. But, so Karen, answer question. I'm not aware of a transfer of property tax revenue of this nature, but keep in mind there are very few basic aid districts in California that are in this situation where property taxes matter. I want to talk about this other school district. So my, I live in a relatively rural area where we have in Placer County, which is in Northern California. And, but the school district that we are in encompasses two different cities. So it's a suburban area, a city, and a very rural county, unincorporated area, but that does have development. So the county is not just farmland. It's, it's, I live in a development community. The population of the rural area is far enough away that we don't have high student population in our schools, but we're far enough away from the city where it would take significant transportation to get us to the city schools. So we have our own school. It's a K-8 school. Even though the school district has K-5 and then 6, 8 middle schools in the other areas, we have a K-8 school. But they choose to invest extra money into that K-8 school because they wanted the junior high students to have, or the middle school students to have the same educational program as the other districts. And even though we have a smaller population and smaller class sizes, they've invested additional money into this K-8 school to run the middle schools, a true middle school. They have sports fields, they have a gymnasium, full gym, robotics program, science labs, all those things you'd find in a typical junior high. They made a local decision to invest additional resources on a per-student basis into the facility to make sure that the programs are equitable throughout the entire district, even though we have a smaller population in our more rural community. So there are ways the districts can do it. It's, and they have, one of their communities has a very challenged population with some lower socioeconomic students and some higher-risk students. But they have been able to work out their budget and hear the voices, not just of the cities, but of the rural area. And part of that, though, is the makeup of the board and that there are voices, more than one voice, in the rural area on the school board. So they also have local control as well.
I think, one of the reasons I just think that's a unique point is because we have heard very clearly from the superintendent that there isn't a desire to spend more per pupil in Malibu, even though Malibu is more expensive to operate. Because they don't want to make that investment, even though you have the disproportionate amount of property tax dollars coming from Malibu. It's just a perfect example of how and why a Malibu's not seeing a return on its tax dollars. And, and we believe that those are the stories and the logic that will, will, the county committee will respond to. But it's just, you know, what, we have to go through the process. But we, we do very much think it's a reasonable argument.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think a couple of comments, which first, aside from the fact that, again, this was a really, really excellent and helpful presentation. I, I got a lot out of it. On page 22 of the presentation, there was a very high-level summary of the Santa Monica arguments for why it should be the way they want to do it or not the way we want to do it. I have to say, they're very, very high-level. I mean, and, you know, it, it's easy to characterize other people's arguments in a way that can be then refuted very easily without getting into the details. I, I really would like to understand, I assume they're not stupid. And I assume they're not making arguments that are just patently frivolous, which is the way these are sort of portrayed. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe they're just, they're just ridiculously extreme. But I suspect there's more to where they're coming from than what's in these bullet point sentences. And I would want to understand that more because I think the only way we're really going to get to a solution, and it's gonna, this is gonna segue into my next point, is if we're taking the arguments head-on and seriously and, and not denigrating them in a way that they don't really, that they're not really being presented. Maybe they are stupid. I don't know. But I'd be surprised. Which brings me to the point of, you know, you're talking about a medi, I've heard the word mediation. I had understood we were asking actually for some binding arbitration in a sense. So, I mean, I, I don't understand why they wouldn't do a mediation. Mediation just means you talk to each other with a third party that tries to help you come to a to a ground where you can agree. You don't bind yourself to anything. I understand what we're actually seeking is to have them be bound to what a third party will tell them. And I completely can understand why they won't do that when they don't, if they don't have to. So I don't, I don't know what leverage, if any, we have for getting Laco or someone else to ultimately pull, put the hammer down, and we have to take our chances too. But make it more quasi-judiciary, because if it's, if it's a negotiation, we have to negotiate, whether we like their positions or not. If we have to get to a negotiated solution, then the only way you ever get there is if you make concessions that you don't think are fair. The only fair settlements, I understand, there's a saying, the only good settlements are ones where neither party is happy. Both parties walk away feeling they gave up something they shouldn't have had to give up. And the last point is, this was a great explanation of how tax dollars are used to fund education, which is what the agenda said it was going to be. What I thought we were going to get a little of too, though, maybe I misunderstood with how it is our residents can be comforted that if we get this done down the line, they're not going to be called upon separate and apart from the property taxes that are coming out of the, out of the part that we don't pay additional to fund the schools. And I understand the argument that historically we've provided this proportionate portion of the funding. I don't, I don't know the details to that, to know that that's accurate. But the one thing we didn't hear anything about, and I, and I know that I'm going to want to understand it better as time goes on, is how, what comfort level do we have and why that 10 years from now Malibu's not going to be going to its residents and saying, you know, it turns out this is a lot more expensive than we thought it was going to be to run our own school district. So we're asking for a parcel tax or an additional city property tax or what have you, because turns out we didn't have the money that we thought we had to fund. Not that we didn't have the money, the money wasn't sufficient to fund this operation. I, I thought we were going to get some of that tonight. Maybe I just misunderstood. But I'm going to want to understand that as we go forward. And I assume the residents are going to want to understand that.
Wow, that, that was a lot. I think, I think, well, I will say, in, in terms of your first question about the slide, I think it was 22. I think what this foundation provided, we actually, I think Latonya mentioned, the consultants from the city has met with the they've met with the consultant from the district and has, have got, they've gotten a better understanding of where the disagreement really is. I think there, there's, we've asked several times, we've tried to replicate his numbers, replicate the the loss and the cuts he was describing, and we never could. I think now the consultants really have a better understanding of where there's disagreement. And we can provide an analysis of that proposal to you now without worrying about whether or not you understood all of the stuff we've talked about tonight. So I believe we could probably provide you a much more in-depth analysis that gets into more detail than the summary of that slide.
Oh, I, I don't need that. I just was suggesting that for purposes of going forward and trying to reach a negotiated resolution with them, I, I don't think it's going to benefit us to simply disparage their arguments the way they are in these bullet points. I think you need to get into the details and recognize where they're coming from and help them understand, while notwithstanding the fact that this is what they believe, the details don't support them. Here's why you're wrong, as opposed to just, because the way these are written, they're just absurd. I don't get how anybody could be saying these things. And if they are, I guess they're just, they are being absurd. But I'd be surprised if that's the case.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Silverstein?
You're muted, Mr. Mayor Grisanti.
I know Karen was, had her hand up, but I would, if you're going to talk, I'd love to talk after you for a moment.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I'll make it quick. Regarding the, the possibility of a local school district coming to the city for money, the voters in any school district have the opportunity to either approve or, or not things like partial taxes, school bonds, things that were in the earlier part of the presentation that have different thresholds for approval. You know, right now, we have joint use agreements with the facilities, with the school district in each of the cities. I assume those would continue. And then, you know, there's a voluntary funding. If parents want to donate to something like an education foundation or in the case of Malibu High School, the Shark Fund, or in the case of our local elementary schools, the PTAs, those are, those are voluntary funds that parents or other community members can make. So I don't, I don't see a risk of the city becoming obligated to put funding toward a future school district. I see that as being just potential ballot measures that the voters can, can approve or not.
And also, for Mr. Silverstein, one of the thresholds that the State Board of Education will require, has required, there are analysis that consultant Ryland has extrapolated out as well as myself, is can the district be viable? You have to prove that it can be viable over a long period of time with the revenue that you would be receiving and your, your, your general operating expenses. The operating expenses, as you have them now, as well as pro rata, what it costs to run a school district. And so that, that's a, that's a hurdle that has to be proven to the, to the county committee and the State Board of Education. And it actually goes out And it actually goes out well over ten years that they require you to prove that you can be a viable school district. You, when, when I first gave my presentation and I, or I talked about being deep into basic aid, as you get deeper into basic aid, that's when you're getting more money per pupil. That's when you get to do things that you'll have money and to add programs that you don't have now, where you might want to add to your middle school, for example, music in your curriculum. You might want music, which, for example, they have at Beverly Hills. You might want choral, you might want performing arts, you might want two or three language. As you get deeper into basic aid, your general fund dollars will be able to afford those additional things that you don't have now that will not come from any additional money other than your own general fund. But it's as you get deeper into basic aid. But yes, by law, they have, we have to prove that we could stand on our own for a long period. Period.
Your hearing?
Yeah, I just, I need to make sure I'm, I'm muted.
You're unmuted.
I believe, I, I could be wrong, that our, our future lies in the hands of Glasgow, right? I mean, they're the ones that are going to decide what the next steps are. I'm just wondering, do we have any feedback from them? We did the presentation. Do we know anything about what they're thinking? Have we got any feedback that says they agree with us, they don't agree with us? Where are we?
We don't have any official from the Laco County Committee members, and we've only heard, you know, the same kind of feedback we've gotten from the Laco staff, which is, you know, get back to negotiating, that's, that's your best, your best move at this point.
They're telling us to go back and negotiate with Santa Monica? That's their advice?
Yes, that's been the consistent advice of the Laco staff, that the best way to accomplish reorganization is to reach an agreement with the, the district.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
We're, Mayor Grisanti.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that part of the reason that we have the problem where they're putting forward these ideas is they are used to being in control of the board and having minimal input from Malibu. And they've run this the way they want to run it for at least the twenty-five years that my children were going through the schools. And, and then the other thing that we've seen for the last ten years is they've done everything they can to drive our students out of, of, to private schools, drive them other places by, by not addressing the PCBs, by not, not when we had the fire and, and kids moved to other areas and wanted to still come in on permit. They, they refused permits to people who lived outside the area. They're, they're trying to reduce the population of the Malibu schools to have this by, by, by student division turn out even more in their favor. And they are, they are profoundly uncaring about our students. And I think that as a result to that, they're willing to put forth any argument, even ones that are patently, patently foolish. So I'm, I think they're bad people.
Well, the one thing that we would say, or that we did say, I didn't get a chance to talk about, but in our negotiations, we started from a disadvantage because the Santa Monica School Board voted right before the negotiations, instructed its staff and its negotiators that we would accept nothing less than a fifty-year program, a fifty-year of revenue sharing. And we do not want our, we, the methodology is that the Santa Monica students should stay the exact same as if the school districts never parted, forever. And so that was what they voted. They voted it in March of twenty eighteen, I believe it was. That was their instruction. And so when we started the negotiations, and that was before I started, but that was when your, your initial ad hoc, we were already in a bad faith negotiation because you put parameters on the negotiation, Santa Monica School Board, to the city that are not realistic. They're not realistic parameters. They don't exist. That methodology doesn't exist anywhere in the separation of school districts. If you separate, you are separate, so you are not the same. And so you can't put a methodology that we have to look exactly like we would have looked if we never separated. So from the very beginning, it was kind of a bad faith from the start, which is when we received their proposal in August of twenty eighteen, they haven't changed. That is their proposal, that the kids keep the same money as if we never parted, which is why they still want the Malibu well. We submitted seven proposals to try to get at this fairly, even paying a premium. It's exactly what you just said. It's just, we haven't had good faith negotiations. Mr. Silverstein?
Well, you know, there's, there are, there are two, at least two different issues. One is financial, another is control over our destiny. And I can understand where you can, in fact, have two separate districts in the sense that each gets to decide for itself what its curriculum is, but they're tied financially. It's not necessarily, it's, it's certainly not a good way to do it, but I can understand the logic to it. I'm not suggesting we should go there. But my question, do we have, I know we filed a petition. Is there a point at which we just have a legal right, if we're prepared to accept the consequences, whatever they may be, to put it before a third party and say, we want, we, we demand separation. You either decide we're entitled to it or we're not entitled to it, and here's what we think is the proper financial terms. But again, they're going to be whatever you tell us they're going to be. Do we have a legal right to that, or is that something that Santa Monica, at the end of the day, has to agree to, or else it can't happen?
No, by, by issuing the petition to Laco, we're following the legally prescribed process for reorganization. And there's nothing within that process that'll, that requires the district to join us in a binding arbitration or even a mediation. We offered mediation during the three-year negotiation process, and they wouldn't agree to mediation.
But will, but will Laco ultimately pull, put the hammer down and say, this is what it's going to be? Either Malibu, no, you can't have it, or Malibu, Santa Monica, sorry, they're leaving, we're agreeing to it, and here are the terms?
Yeah, so interestingly, what the Laco County Committee's duty or role is in this is to assess our petition according to the nine criteria and determine whether or not we've put forth a proposal that allows for a feasible and viable school district. And that, that's it. There, there's no, there's no other function or role for them. We've, you know, we asked, and I think you saw in our, in our last couple of back and forth with the district, we'd like them to take a much more active role, and maybe we can ask that of them. But there's nothing in the law that requires them to do that.
But if, but if they say we have done what you've just described, does that mean it's done? Then they order it, so, you know, so be it. We are now independent, and those were the terms that we set forth? Or is it never ending unless we get agreement from Santa Monica?
No, 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 no. The petition process does allow for, for them to make a decision and approve our petition. And then we would have to take our petition to the State Board of Equal, State Board of Education for additional approval. Once it's approved by the State Board of, I want to say equalization because Kathy's been in my head for the last six weeks, that once we take it to the State Board of Education, then it comes back to our electorate for us to vote on a school board, our map area, several other things. There would still need to be an election. But there is a prescribed for statutory process that does not require us to have agreement.
So for, for what it's worth, I mean, if, if they are being, if they are being objectively unreasonable, just march, march forward, just keep going towards the compulsory dissolution. They'll either come to the table or they won't, but we'll at least be moving forward.
And that is absolutely the direction we got from council member we are. Yes.
Thank you, Bruce. We have Steve, and then I think we ought to start looking to wrap up. Steve, you need to unmute.
I want to follow up from Bruce's question. So, so let's assume that Laco, they say no, all right? Is, where do we go from here? Is there a, where do we go? I mean, is there something other than Laco that we can go to to get this thing done? And where is that? I just.
I, Councilmember Euring, I would, I would really suggest if we were going to talk about a legal strategy after Laco's decision, we should do that in closed session. That's probably the best answer I could give you to that.
Okay, so if Laco says no, then we, we, we got to sit back down and rethink what we're going to do. Is that, is that your suggestion?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I understand that. Okay. That's all I got.
Is there anybody else?
We're, remember, are currently before them, and what we're waiting for is just a preliminary approval to get into the process. Then we start the process. Then we start the formal sequo, uh, uh, analysis, the analysis is that they require, and we will be formally in the process. So the decision before them right now, which they still could say no, but it's just, put us in the process so we can get on the track. You, with all this, we're still not on the track yet. We, we want to be on the track headed towards the, the end of the destination.
Steve?
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree. I mean, I've sat through how many meetings at City Hall where the folks who said we were really close to getting this done, they kept saying, yeah, we're, you know, we're going to get it done, we're going to get it done, and it never happened. I'm just trying to figure out, at least my own mind, that says, where do I go? What do I have to do to make it happen? Because if we, I just don't understand it. I mean, do we need a vote of the, we're going to come back to a vote of the residents? Is it a vote of the residents and the vote of Santa Monica? I don't know. All right, I'm just trying to get in my head that said, what are my chances? Right? Have I got a good chance, bad chance, no chance, some chance? I've just, what I do.
I could jump in here for a second. Like many things, we're, we are in the process of exhausting our remedies right now. And if our remedies, if we don't, if we're not successful, then there will be legal ramifications and, and another path for us, which is inappropriate to discuss at this time because it's not agendaized.
I, I'm not trying to be, I, I'm, look, from a long run perspective, I, I don't care, I don't, I don't want to talk about whether I need to. I'm just trying to understand what the steps we got to go through to get this done. I just don't understand those.
Ken, so I will, I will say that, as Latonya mentioned, we are right now, because we are a city petitioner, there is this preliminary hearing, a preliminary review of our petition. And at that point, they will issue a tentative recommendation to deny or to approve the petition. That's where we are. This is unique to the city issued petition. If we came to Laco any other way, we would not have had this preliminary step with a tentative recommendation. So once the tentative recommendation is issued, that they approve the recommendation, the petition, then our next step is a full-fledged kind of feasibility study looking at the nine criteria. Part of the challenge is we don't have a lot of the data from the district to, to really flesh out some of the different criteria. And then there will be a sequel study possibly that we'll need to do within that timeframe. So after the tentative recommendation, we will complete the feasibility study, possibly do a sequo study, and then present the final proposal back to Laco for ultimate decision. Once they make that ultimate decision, let's say they approve that, then we go to the State Board of Education for their review.
This is a very curvy road going ahead. I appreciate your comment. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank everybody for the time you've generated, that you've devoted to this. And I appreciate the additional education I received. And it's always humbling to realize that there's a whole bunch of stuff that I wasn't exposed to before, and I've been exposed now, and I really thank you for it. And I hope that we all wake up one morning and, and laugh. Laco is just in our, in our corner. And in the meantime, I think we'll put in a call to the County of Los Angeles and see if, get Sheila's office to weigh in our, on our side. I don't know that that would help, but it can't hurt.
It couldn't hurt.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May we take the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you, everyone, and yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.